Okay, Commissioner Erickson just joined their uh we'll go ahead and get the work session started. As a general announcement, this meeting is being recorded. There's no cost for public hearing and no holdups or discussion on the agenda. For new business, there's one thing on the agenda. He asked Meredith Ketchum to talk about foster care recruitment and she had here to give us a presentation. So, did you want to move to the table?
Is that what you would like?
Yes. Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Patty Wosik as a foster care supervisor at Children in Youth. I've been there now for almost about fourteen years. Right now, you may or may not know, but it's actually National Foster Awareness Month. So it comes at a good time that we're, even though we're always recruiting, we're kind of trying to have it coincide together. So, I just wanted to bring a couple flyers for you to see in case when you're out about around town that you can see some of the work that we're doing. With it being National Foster Month, we work with our local library. They have a large display area. When you walk into the building, a big lot of space. And so, we are in there for the month of May for a National Foster Month, obviously with numbers of where they can call if if they're interested in learning more about it, so I have a flyer if you would like to see that. Right now, we have seventeen licensed foster homes. That spans across, I believe, four counties because we look for foster homes not only within our county, but in other counties because sometimes just given the situation where they have to look to place a child, to place a child elsewhere. We usually average about twenty to twenty-three homes. So, we have seen a decrease in our numbers, but that's primarily because if a child who comes into foster care ultimately is available for adoption, the family will look to adopt the child, thus filling the home, filling your wish, and therefore closing. So it's a kind of catch-22 where we're pleased that permanency was achieved for the child, but now we don't have a foster home because they're closed. So, right now, there's an initiative out there by the state which is called Family First. And that has to do with trying to utilize, obviously, foster homes, kinship homes, which is just meaning there is a relative or someone that that family might know versus putting them in group homes, shelters, treatment facilities. There are still those kids, obviously, that may need that level of care, but there's really endorsing the endorsement by the state saying, hey, let's do what we can to try to put them in more of a least restrictive environment. So with that being said, we're kind of, I don't know, say campaigning, but trying to develop a monthly recruitment plan where each month we're doing something to let the community know that foster homes are needed. We're actually working with the marketing department of the school's Career Center. They have very talented students there and we're working with them to formulate a recruitment plan where each month they're going to tell us of some creative ways to get the word out, you know, and especially, you know, from the younger generation who may have something more creative than what we've been doing. We think that that will be very helpful, so we're in the stages of doing that. But one of the things too that the students just did for us is they did two different flyers, and I'll pass these around, that again, I thought that they came up with a picture and all of the wording and that. And what we then did was my foster care caseworker is contacting area businesses. In particular, when we look at our foster homes, we have a lot of two-parent foster homes, which is wonderful, and we have single women foster homes, which is great, but we don't have a lot of the single male foster homes. And we do a lot of work with juvenile probation and trying to see if those youth that are delinquent, trying to keep them out of, out of the group homes, et cetera, if they could go into a foster home. So, we were thinking that, you know, maybe that's where we should kind of focus our attention right now as we look for group homes, is to see if there might be some males that would be interested in being, you know, whether it's a big brother, mentor, things of that sort. So, again, my worker contacted some of the area businesses in town who said that they would be more than willing if we had a flyer or some type of material that they would gladly put it in their brain room, their lunch room, their entryway, et cetera. And so, I think at this point, there's a lot of businesses in Warren as we're making these calls. And so, I think at this point, he has been able to touch base with ten different businesses that are willing to have the flyers and information in their business. So that's kind of what we're doing right now. Certainly, if there's anything, you know, that anyone else can think might be beneficial. I know one of the things that the students at the Career Center had talked about was Facebook. It was very, they talked a lot about having some type of link, some type of page, et cetera. And I know that obviously we've been able to converse with Commissioner Erickson in the past about that possibility. But again, they're, they're looking at something each month to be able to get the word out. And so, like I said, this is what we were, we were starting with.
They were hoping that these would adhere towards the fourteen to twenty-one year old males. The words were specifically chosen so that they would understand they don't we're a family, we're looking for somebody who wants to, to have any who's coming to their home, that they can have a positive impact so that, because everybody thinks, you know, if a foster family, I need to be a family. Well, no, you could be a single male who wants to make a difference and this is an opportunity for you to make a difference.
And for some of these, for some of the older teens, they don't, they don't want, you know, they say, we have a mom and dad, we don't want another mom and dad, we don't want another... But again, it's someone who, you know, will care about them, keep them safe, help them develop skills, be that consistent role model in their life day in and day out. And we did, but it's been several years, we did have two, two really good foster dads and then just, you know, things happened in life and they weren't able to continue fostering. So, unlike I said, I think that's a part right now that, that were kind of, is kind of a missing piece for us.
Can you walk through the process if someone was interested? Like say if you, somebody who's forty-five, that is, you know, a single dad or person and wanted to foster, what would the steps be for them to do that?
Well, when they call the agency, they're connected to our department and we gather their name and their address and there's a packet of information that gets sent to them in the mail. And it always starts with the application because we feel that we at least want them to make the effort to fill out. It's only two to three pages. And then when they return that to us, and we had a chance to review it, we contact them and we set up a time to go to their home. And when we go to their home, then we, you know, meet with them one-on-one or with a spouse, whoever's in the house, and kind of begin the process. Like we start to conduct the home study, we get a walk through of the house, things of that sort. And simultaneously with that, they have homework. And their homework is they need to obtain their clearances, all three of their clearances. We schedule them for training. We're actually conducting training right now, orientation, because that's a requirement by the state that they have to have so many hours of training. So they have training, they have the home study, they have the clearances. The application that they return to us has references, they provide us with references. So we are making those while they are doing, you know, what they're supposed to be doing. So, it's really, you know, obviously...
And say, how long do you think it takes?
It's not, unfortunately, it would be nice if it was fast, but it takes months.
Which it should. And you don't want to just, hey, you know, you want a kid here.
Right, right. Well, we go as fast as they will go. But let's just say they were real go-getters and, you know, ready to jump right in. We probably could do it in ninety days in a three-month period because like I said, you know, the clearances, when you send those, the way that takes a while. Especially if we pointed to the fact that if they live out of state, we are required to get a clearance from that other state as well as ours. And so, some states move faster than others. So, but really, if they, if they are working on something all the time, it can be within ninety days.
If they leave, when they have well water, they have to have their water tested and they have to have a sleeping space just aside for the youth. Those different rules that they would have to be able to accommodate.
But the overall process, like I said, is, you know, that's the general, you know, four to five things that they need to, that they need to have. So, like I said, you know, it's just that they don't, folks don't have to be married. They can, they can be, you know, a couple, they can be single. It's just that at this point, they have to just be twenty-one years of age is what's required. The state is actually talking about lowering that to eighteen.
Yeah. That's for that.
I think they're doing that more for kin because if you were a sibling, if you were eighteen and your siblings were going about to care, right now, eighteen, you can't do that. So I think they're trying to lower it for that. I think we would still try, probably be a little bigger. You need to have, what, is it ten years?
Right. One of the requirements, you know, in the application is to discuss this financial stability because fostering, while you receive, you know, a stipend for caring for the child, we want to know that that's not what you're in it for, that you are financially stable prior to this child coming into the house. And so, when you break it down a little bit further, one of, one of the requirements by the state is that if you've been employed, they want to see ten years' worth of financial records. You know, your W-two's, your P-stubs, there's a couple different things that are asked of you, but it is, it is one of the things that they recall here.
One of the primary goals of county government that your department feels so strongly is that we want to build strong families. And all the mediating institutions need to come around and help families. So I think it's great that you're going after the businesses and trying to engage them. You know, we are another mediating institution that's trying to help mediate the family, right? I think another one that strikes me that we need to reach out to would be the churches. So if you'd like to do a letter to the churches, perhaps you can bring that information to me and I'll put a letter together on my letterhead and send it out to every church in the county.
Wonderful, very helpful.
Yes, the businesses have been, you know, sometimes there's a little phone tag that's been involved. I know Chuck, my worker, you know, he has his list here of, you know, people his love messages for and phone tags, et cetera. But when he has been able to talk to them, they've been, you know, they've been very receptive and said, no, you know, that's not a problem at all. So, I'm hopeful that, you know, when it is put in the place with then, you know, an employer that, you know, if you're punching the clock or you're getting a snack out of the vending machine, you know, you see it, it may catch your eye. Like I said, that's why some of the wording on here, you know, sometimes I think when people think of foster care, you know, there's good things that they think about and bad things that they think about in regards to it. So that's why, again, when we're trying to focus on the older teens and the males that, you know, that's why we chose words such as motivate, guide, inspire, you know, versus, you know, be the parent, you know, be a parent 24/7 type of thing, so. But I very much appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. Could you talk to us in raw numbers again about how many are currently in foster care? How many, just probably speaking, what the need is, how many families are looking for?
We have eleven in foster care right now. We have probation homeless thirteen youth in group, well, twelve youth in group home. One of their youth did make it to foster care. We have two who are in group homes as well. We're looking for probably about six to seven families right now who would be able to start transitioning before next year because there's about six or seven youth who would be able to leave the group homes and actually transition into a family setting. The other need to stay in their group homes for their place, they're not appropriate to kind of enter the community yet. So we're looking for, I mean, like a class of about six or seven to be prepared because Family First goes into effect October of 2020. So we want to make sure with their license. Patty has started to include Tony Marino in her orientation and training. So he does a specific class on parenting teens. And then depending on why the probation child or the CYS child is in a group home, will then give the family who has chosen for their child specific training regarding their issues. If they have a drug and alcohol problem, we give them some drug and alcohol training. If they have mental health issues, goes into mental health training and have them connected with those services so that it will be a successful placement. And these families, we have money set aside where we have a tier system for how much we pay foster families. We have a higher price to pay the families for these particular children to help with the transition because they understand that the problem they have with caseworker and the probation officer, they'll have many more appointments because these children have a higher need. So our expectations are higher, so we're willing to pay them a higher premium than we pay some of our families.
Can you give some examples of, so first of all, the foster care, there's eleven that you currently have.
Right.
Have they all been through JTO before?
No, my eleven, there's, there's one who, who is a JPO youth who is right now.
So this is primarily been driven by, not by history, but by this change in law?
Right, but by the change in law. We've always had a median price for this age group, but there is now a bigger push for this and we've been working with probation on helping for them to identify the fact that if a youth has been in a group home for any length of time, he's been stable, that maybe we could move them out of the group home into a foster home to learn the same skills that they would be getting, which is why we're looking for like single males or individuals who are willing to not so much be parent parents to the delinquent youth, but somebody that the child can rely on because they have family so that they'll learn independent living skills and then come back to the community and become productive members of the community without fighting for the whole, you need to follow, you need to be my child, because they're at an age where they're already pushing away. And to have them trying to accommodate that way wasn't going to work. So we're trying to then be able to give probation the homes that they need to be able to put the youth in those homes.
And we've also been trying to, we've been working with probation, it's been a couple, probably two years or so, where we've tried to work with them to say, if they, if they end up determining that a youth is delinquent, do they really need to be placed in that, in that group home? Do they really need to be placed in, you know, as we refer to this, a congregate care setting? You know, is their crime something of more minor in nature that if we put them in a veteran structured foster home, that they could succeed just as well as that? And so, we've been working with them to say, you know, when you encounter that kid, could you please, before you pick up the phone and you call those facilities, discuss with us first, you know, this is the situation and this is, you know, what the child has done. Do you have a home that you think would be able to handle this? Again, referring to it as less restrictive. You know, there will be those cases that still require a certain, you know, more secure facility, a treatment type of facility, but I know, you know, for the kids who perhaps, I think we had one a couple of years ago where they had keyed cars. That's what they did, they had keyed a car. Okay, does that pose a high risk to the community? Or if they're in a home that, you know, is able to keep an eye, you know, quickly look to, to do that instead? So, we've done it, we've been starting to do that the past couple of years, trying to change the mindset and say, let's, let's think about this first. And like I said, it's, it's been, it's been going well. But now we're to a point where if they were to call us, that my homes are kind of full right now with flyers, so.
Good. And it strikes me that not only would this be more effective because you're taking kids who are married with broken relationships and putting them in an environment where they can build strong relationships and have good mentors in their lives. Not only that, but it seems like it'd probably be cheaper since we know the cost of group homes is incredibly high. I would imagine it doesn't cost nearly as much to have the community surround it.
Probably a quarter.
Probably a quarter.
Yeah, if not, depending on some of the group homes, it could be more than a quarter, a year.
And then, and then in some cases, they get better, I would say they get more attention from the foster family than they would in a group home. I mean, they get, when you go to the group home, you get therapy and there's group activities and all that stuff. But it's, you know, some of the foster parents are really very involved with their kids.
Right, and that's one of the things that we actually cover in our orientation when families come, when potential foster families come through, is we talk about the importance of engagement, engagement with the biological family. Again, if that, you know, if the bull is rarefication and we're looking to return them. And, you know, we don't put any type of restriction on it. You know, you have some that are willing to foster that say, you know, I would gladly, you know, talk to the bio-family on the phone. You know, that's as much as we want to do. And then we have some foster families, some of our, our real, I can't disable these, but goodies who have fostered for a long time that said, oh, we'll invite the biological family over to our house. We actually have one family who, a foster family who was caring for a teen girl because they do really well with teen girls. And she was graduating high school and they put their name and the biological family's name on the graduation invitation and said, you know, we so-and-so and cordially invite you to... And they had a graduation party at that. So like, you know, engagement can kind of look different depending on, on the family. But again, that's something that you could get more so than a foster home. You know, because again, they're trying to, to let that child or let that, let that youth know that, you know, there are several that care about them and, you know, their overall well-being. So, we're really, we're really starting to talk a lot about that other training.
Yeah, the youth, especially delinquent, have, also can look at the group homes as a tool of this thing, you know, and have less likely to trust them as an entity than someone who's, you know, out of kindness of their heart to some degree taken them in. You know, I think that's why their, their relationship with them may be a little bit stronger than if they don't talk to a therapist or somebody else in the institution.
Are there any restrictions on where the family would have to live?
No, no. Like I said, you know, right now, we're at the foster homes here in Warren. But again, we have, we have them in other counties. We have them in Erie because we have separate quarry families, so, you know, that's Erie County. We have them in Franklin.
Right, we have them in...
Vanango.
Hyrum, Lakeview.
Yes, Lakeview.
We tried to say it, close enough.
Sure, but it would be a problem if someone's from Loveville or something.
No, we have somebody in Fairleigh.
We're fairly, but we do have someone in Loveville, so, yes, because, you know, again, sometimes depending on the situation, sometimes it is best for the child to leave, you know, leave there. You know, if it has something to do with, you know, something that, that transpired in their school or, you know, if there's any type of, you know, no contact with a parent, et cetera. So, yes, we are willing to, to travel that far. And it's, and it has, has worked well because like I said, there have been times where we're like, gee, they need to go elsewhere. And we haven't had that, that blessing of being able to go outside.
Any other questions, comments, public comments? By public, I mean public heads. Very good.
No, just basically wanted to let you know what we were up to in the, you know, our nice little display. But that's in the library, it's beautiful. We have a case agent and another caseworker who are extremely creative, luckily. And then, the Career Center has been great. They have worked with us and have really come up with, I mean, we tried, we couldn't come up with a flyer that looked like that. At all. So we just gave them the information and the school district is nice enough that it's a service that they provide to us for free. They're willing to do that first.
Do you forward whatever information you have, like in an email effectively and then try to put some video on Facebook? We should also be collecting that anyway because we're going to start working human services websites and so that'll be a part of it, we'll try to incorporate that.
Great, thank you.
Yes, I mean, anything over, I know, Ann and Hannah will work on getting a letter out.
And certainly if there's ever any kind of creative idea or thing that you, that you see out there, if you think of, you know, if you think of us in foster and, you know, send it. I know that, you know, there are other agencies at a distance that, you know, they have, I've seen like yards, you know, sign, just a variety of things, you know, if you think that it's something that would be appealing or eye-catching to, to individuals, certainly we're always open to that idea. Obviously, we always look at the cost down. When I go to Meredith, I try not, you know, I've seen there are some places, you know, that has billboards on the highway and things of that sorts. I don't know that that's been our budget, but, but it's...
It's a social thing.
Yes, yes. So, we're, we're just always grateful and open to anything, so. We have, we have excellent foster families. I just have to brighten them for a minute. Like I said, we've had some that, you know, have fostered first for thirty years and they're still with us and they've had hundreds of kids in their home and get invited to all those hundreds of kids' birthday parties. I don't know how they feel about that and they're always going to, to that. But I, I like to think that, that the ones we have are certainly have some great reasons, so.
There are people too that I've met, you know, through, right amongst the other stuff where, you know, they wanted a kid and couldn't have one and through that process, they've managed to adopt a child. And I'll see them, you know, like a year or two later and they're just so happy that they got involved in the program. So, like there, you know, there are a lot of layers to that that are very positive. And I think, I'm glad that you guys came here and talked about this because this is one of those things that I don't think, you know, when people talk about their tax dollars and, you know, what are my tax dollars going for or what am I, you know? There are a lot of positive things that come out of the money that we fund these programs with. You know, there's people that otherwise would have very difficult lives if they hadn't had the intervention of the, of the group, you know, people who would have ended up in drug addicted households and probably end up in jail who were going to be raised by people who were going to care for them and give them along fruitful life, you know. So, I mean, I just, you know, the fostering thing sounds scary to some people but it's actually, there's an enormous amount of reward out of it, you know, aside from us.
And I think that's why it's important that we've had Tony Marino who's our parent educator who's been there for almost twenty years, working him into the orientation because a lot of times people come into fostering and, you know, they want the little, they want the babies or the two-year-olds or three-year-olds because the idea of teens can be scary, you know. And he then does this certain component to talk about, hey, you know, you can do it. You can, you can parent a teen and many of us have and et cetera, and kind of put them a little bit at ease. You know, you know, there are some that still say, no, we're still not interested, we're not comfortable. But his role there is to say, you know, there's, there's plenty of support to get you through the time up there in the house and could you please, you know, maybe broaden your, your thoughts and consider taking one, so.
Well, I think that there's some element of it, think of it as like coaching, except on a more important level. You know, because I don't, you know, it's like, there's people that I've talked to where they get a kid who's, say, almost middle school age or younger and the only words that they can use are profane words. And over the course of like six months, they teach them how to speak and they get to a point where they're presentable and they're, you know, good and mannered and, you know, and when you make, you know, like that's a good example of, of taking somebody who's in a really rough spot who's never had a good role model, taking them and turning them into, or giving them an opportunity of a really positive existence. I mean, there's just so many good things that come out of it. I mean, certainly for them, for these people I'm talking about, it's a lot of work, but the reward, I mean, it's just so huge, you know, I mean, I don't, I just, it's a good thing.
Well, if they're staying in the group home, that's just going to continue.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
They don't have the opportunity to, to see what it's like to be in a family and they're not raising anybody to be a family member and then our cycle just continues. So we're looking to stop our cycle and have youth learn how to be part of the family and then how to, to be a member. And so if they have a family, then they know what to do because a group home is already a place to grow up in. You're not taught how to be a part of a family, you're taught how to live in an institution, one to sleep, one to get up. And it's just not, that's what it's all about.
Yeah, the group home is there to prevent you from injuring yourself and other people. Like, you know, the, a foster home is there to teach you how to live, you know, your life. And that's the lesson, it's the art. I mean, people talk about how to break the cycle, like, you know, crime, the families that have perpetual, you know, whether it's school attendance, employment, you know, issues, like the earlier you get it, the more work you do. The beginning, the bigger the danger, the bigger the whole problem.
Just knowing you did, tell everybody that they want to foster you. youths are fun, they're not, if you don't change your life patterns, you don't do anything bad. They can stay away from it, they can do dishes, they can help out, youths are fun. They do have the left twenty-four seven, the youth is there to, to go to basketball games, to see everyone, to go outside and play, to, to do their stuff.
Well, thank you very much on coming presenting, but also the final review. All right, any public comment slash department or committee updates?
Gilbert? Every year I update the issue, it's just pretty regular, pretty much. We have our two thousand eighteen taxes in our system now with tax claim. Basically, the taxes at that point unpaid with the tax collector and now with us, Tax Pay Bureau.
It's amazing how consistent these numbers are.
Yeah, basically, they're pretty much the same across the board, there's some little variations, but.
I mean, they're literally six houses, there are six properties. I mean, all the way down the line.
Yeah, pretty much. Five thousand, nice little sheet to share with you. Basically, it shows you the percentage that's returned to us as a liquid from each municipality. And it remains pretty consistent at about ten percent.
Yeah, just.
About ten percent, yeah.
So it's about ten percent for the city of Warren, twenty-three for Fairleigh, twenty-five for Clarendon, four for Sugar Grove.
Clarendon is the highest of all of them, I thought. Fairleigh has jumped up there a little bit.
Yeah, Fairleigh's been.
It doesn't take much.
Yeah. They jumped up three people, you know. One from two years ago, they're actually just in line with what they were previously.
Nice little sheet just to update every year, just to see if anything, where to happen, like maybe if someone happens with a tax collector or something, we can kind of keep an eye on it.
That was very helpful.
Just thought I'd share.
Kind of want to drop it a little bit, a percent.
It's the lowest in the past five years. Not much, but.
Now, is this one they collected Phil or is this the past due?
These are the ones that have returned as a liquid to us.
So they didn't make the deadline?
Yeah, so these are all of them.
Well, I can't remember what the deadlines again, it's April.
April twelve is the deadline to pay your tax collector.
Like the, the very last.
Yeah, the very last day, we have made it first, they were all in our system.
I was in the wrong one, so it's twenty-three, six down.
It's pretty close to five years.
It's actually dropped, actually, I know. Was it the wrong number? It's actually dropped every year.
Good, thanks for your update. Anything else? We're good. Did you want to see this?
If you want to.
Okay.
Obviously elections.
Department update, yes.
Elections are two weeks from tomorrow. I'm getting my voter registration all finalized. I hope to start for all books by the end of the week. Campaign finance reports are complete as of today and due later than Friday. I am only going to be here until about twelve-thirty, quarter one on Friday. So if you bring your campaign finance report in, please have it pre-notarized and then just lay it on my desk. I have to take my mom for identification on Friday for you, so. But. Buy it early.
Absentee ballot due Tuesday, right?
Next Tuesday is the last day to collect your absentee ballot and then be back here on the Friday before the election. So I'm still processing those and getting those in.
So what if, so wait, okay, so next Tuesday is the deadline to apply for.
For a regular absentee ballot.
So if you're going to carry an absentee ballot for someone.
You have to write paperwork.
Yeah, like, is there a deadline for that? Is that just, is it just the same day?
Same, same, yeah.
Okay. Because you, that's the one thing that people get confused on is they want somebody to pick up their absentee ballot, give it to them, then bring it back.
And they have to have a designated agent assigned to them.
And that, they have to be notarized, right?
No, those ones do not have to be notarized. Once we get to the emergency paper ballots, which is Wednesday, then that starts to be notarized. And then, you know, that's notarized by the elections office, then we get to the point where the judge has to, okay, and, and that arrives and stuff, so, but that's not until, you know, Monday, Monday before the election, so.
I did have one citizen say that they had not been able to vote last time because they had to go to the ER on election day. Hospital day. In those situations, they call the courthouse and the board of elections can go to them, right?
Yeah, I would go to them, sure. But there again, it has to be okay by the judge.
Sure.
The judge has to sign off of it, so.
Literally, my arm got cut off in the ER.
Yeah. And I'd go to Jeff's car to explain that and she could sign off and then we could, then we could look down.
Any other updates?
Just campaign finance reports.
Have, have the, have you, I know that we've gotten some information on the election systems and the costs.
I'm still waiting to hear back from Nathaniel. He's got all the, looking at all the legal aspects, but that's as far as.
Oh, okay, so, so the solicitor's looking at it and then.
All the contracts that I got. The, the outcome law contracts for better, like, better work because they're not the actual ones because we haven't, you know.
One thing that we need to do is double check all prices against the.
Co-stars.
Co-stars prices, just because I've had, so after, you know, I told everybody to get vaulted in the regional system and they're like, no, we think we can handle it on our own. Now I'm getting messages from everybody that they're, that the quotes that they're getting are above the Co-Stars contracts. And unless you keep an eye on it, you're going to end up paying more than you should.
Right, exactly.
You know, and, and, you know, so.
And the election, that website, the information is all entered.
Okay.
You just have to do your magic with it and it's going to be good.
Okay, and let's see, any project updates you want to bring to the table?
So I wanted to request the, I don't know, did you get the email from WCCBI or the Visitors Bureau on the application to the EPA for a grant that would bring a federal team to the county in order to do a comprehensive plan on, on like tourism and related to rural communities?
If anything, I was thinking that I could do that as a multi-region. At minimum, it would make sense for the county to do it because they're targeting towards municipalities like the city, but they prefer that we work together. So the county, I mean, the community agent for this county, I'm wondering if we don't kick it to like the Northwest Commission or something to do McKee, Elkhores and Warren together.
The, the only, because we discussed that at the meeting we had last week, the only problem with that is the deadline's the end of the month to get the application. And so, so immediately I was like, well, if we have to go talk to McKee County or talk to Crawford or whatever, I mean, you're going to have two or three weeks and then that's before you can get anything written. So.
That's we be forced on.
What, what's, what I'm requesting is, is that we take twenty-five hundred dollars from the marketing budget that we allocated and then use that to get, give it to the WCCBI to get the grant writer to do the whole application and then put that in place.
Great, a perfect solution.
Because they're, they're selecting, I believe, eight communities that are basically, they're, they're lending some preference to states that are bordering the northern border. On the fact that we're associated with the A and F and, and the dam and some other things will put us in a perfect position for it. So I think it's a worthwhile undertaking.
Absolutely, it is.
But I, I just think, unless we get somebody to do it, I don't think it's going to get done by the end of the month.
Okay, yeah, that sounds like a great solution.
Okay, then I'll, I'll, I'll let Mr. Decker know and have them, he's working with the city and with the Visitors Bureau and others on it. So, good, tell them we'll fund it.
Good, any other projects?
The, I, I, once I get done with this meeting, I'm going to start calling. Again, the senators from the Appropriations Committee, just for the M A T P situation. We've had a lot of really good news on it generally. The, out of the twenty-four senators that are on the Appropriations Committee, sixteen of them have co-sponsored the bill. However, we got the schedule for the appropriations here today and it's not on the agenda. Needs to be on the agenda to be discussed and voted on so it can be moved to the floor for a vote. That's the only procedural thing that needs to be done in order to get a vote on it. If we don't get it today, the Appropriations Committee is not meeting again until something like June or something like that, sometime later where they'll have an opportunity to speak about it. So we need them to vote on it today and move it forward, otherwise there's a real good chance. And this might be what some people are banking on, that the Department of Human Services is going to award a contract in that time before the stop is put up by the legislature, so. Really, you know, Lisa, Pam, Stacy, were really helpful in getting stuff together, disseminating information out to everybody. And I think that we really helped move the needle on getting people aware and interested in it. We've now had several big counties sign on with resolutions, including Chester County. The number of total citizens represented is over a million, so I think that it's a big enough chunk that they'll, you know.
I had a voicemail message from Joe Scott to let you know that he has gone down through the list to call the foster mothers and all the representatives.
Well, we got Joe Scott, I say. I'm sure they're like, oh gosh, Joe Scott, he called.
Super out of scope, he's not here because he's probably at Harrisburg right now.
He probably got, he probably got down all their doors. He'd be the one you'd want to send down. Yeah, so we're going to try to do another round of that after this meeting.
Okay, very good. In terms of Commissioner's schedule, I don't think there's anything up. I have more online this week.
Oh, I'm not going to be here Wednesday. I'm probably going to try to call, I'm, I'm actually, I think what I'll do is call into the meeting. I'm going to be in the housing form in Harrisburg, so, okay.
I may ask the table the discussion about the parking bid, mainly because I want to have a conversation about the Rust Road Fund. Okay, we're doing that, but I'll see if I can get my research done to you now then.
Well, the, well, I mean, the thing is, is we could, oh, okay.
Anything else scheduled, or?
No.
Anything else that's missing on the agenda?
So what's this, what's this situation with the K nine?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Because I ran into the sheriff and he talked to me, I'm assuming it's the same thing. My question is, is I thought we would have more time to discuss it before just having it on the agenda.
Yeah, I apologize, I think I said I was going to send an email, but I don't believe I ever did. The basic idea is to have a K nine signed to the sheriff's office at absolutely no cost to the county whatsoever, except for course when it's called out and is actually used and the officer handling them would be, you know, there'd be that time. But beyond that, the sheriff's office has been able to acquire donations to cover having a county sheriff's office K nine unit. So we already have actually equipment from previous because that can be just after nine eleven, the county had a couple of K nines. And so they have all veterinary costs, all food costs covered, a grant, a couple of grants, I believe, actually covered the cost of the dog and so on. So it's not going to cost the county anything, I don't see any reason to oppose it. We checked the insurance, it's not going to cost anything more, but they visit their due diligence in terms of finding out if we did go, if they didn't need additional insurance, then we found someone to cover that as well. So hats off to the sheriff and Officer Kitty, we would probably send a homework on that.
Is, well, I mean, is, is there any way we can get like a presentation from the work session before we go on this and get any kind of details as far as like, I, because I haven't had a chance to go through the packet or anything yet. I'm, I'm generally supportive of it, I just want to see exactly, you know, what the costs are and where it's coming from. Just because I don't want to have a situation where we sign off on this and then two months down the road it's like, oh, we don't actually have this or they backed out or whatever and then we're on the hook for something.
Sure.
Or that you're.
Did you read the email that came from him in regard to the request that we made for all the information regarding the expenses?
The what? From, from Hannah?
Send a follow-up email from the handler, yeah?
Hi, Commissioner Morrison, I think you are completing the dog that would be in the courtroom of the K nine unit assigned to the sheriff's office. We're talking about two dogs.
Oh, okay, yeah, I, I mean, so, yeah, I'm not very much about the K nine from sheriff's office. But that is something sort of different than I agree with Commissioner Ives in that presentation.
Okay, why don't we do this? Can I leave it on the agenda for now? I will talk to the sheriff's office and see if timing wise it would damage the, the project at all to postpone it another week. If it would, then let's have the discussion at the meeting on Wednesday. If it will not, if it would not hurt anything to have it pushed off, then we'll have the next Monday work session, presentation on this.
Okay. And if the, if there's, for some reason, if there's some issue to not, we, what I would do is just try to, to meet for whatever concerns or questions I have as much as possible.
Yeah, the, the only reason I said that by the way is because I believe the training for the handler is in June. So they may need to have the application or something in sooner, sooner than later. So that's, that was my only concern, but if it, if it's not going to be.
So I, is there, is there any way that we can ask the sheriff before we're all done with information now so that we can review it on?
Absolutely. We'll be in touch with the sheriff's office.
I appreciate having that.
Yep, and again, I think, well regardless, why don't we just have the sheriff's office come and do a presentation at our last meeting? It's not a very long meeting, right?
Yeah.
Well, I realize that I have probably more information in, in my hands to review prior to the meeting if we're going to vote on whether or not we move forward on that prior to the meeting. I don't have one, so.
Additionally, you won't be there for some, so.
So probably if we can, I would be better to do it at the next work session.
Okay, well, that's what I'll try for, okay? Very good, anything else? No calls for executive session at this meeting, although remember we do have an executive session at eleven o'clock on Wednesday, correct? And that is to go over all outstanding legal items with the solicitor.
Jack, will you be talking into that?
Um, probably not. I, I've, I've had conversations with the solicitor on the stuff that I'm working on, so I don't know. I'll, I'll meet with him, otherwise I'd prefer to be there, but I, I'm, I don't know whether I'll be or not.
Okay. Have any discussions moving forward in meetings in any way?
No, I don't.
Okay, very good. Anything else that would be good to do or? Then let's stand your, that's.